It's 6:30, so I'll go ahead and start this meeting. This is the Tuesday, September 21 city council meeting. Madam City Clerk, would you call the order, please? Call the roll, please, excuse me.
Mayor Karen Moran. Deputy Mayor Kristi Mauchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell. Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Kent Train. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm here, I couldn't hear you for a second. Sorry, Lita.
We have Councilmember Train, present. Yes, I see him, okay, very good. All right, Madam City Clerk, we do have a quorum. Can I get a motion to excuse Councilmember Odell? He is traveling and I believe that the mayor is due to join us in about 30 minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Odell, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Councilmember Odell is formally excused from the meeting. I apologize for my voice, I'm obviously still not well. Meeting accessibility pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to virtual city council meetings this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Note, the city is now using Zoom webinar to host its public meetings. To join the Zoom webinar, you need to do so on the web at zoom.us/97743476957. By phone, 253-215-8782 and enter the webinar ID, which is 977-43476957, and the pound sign. You can view our meetings at samamish.us/tv21 on the city's YouTube channel and on Comcast Channel 21 within the city of Samamish only. To view later, it would be the same venues. Councilmember Gamblin, could I get you to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamblin. I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, I'll second it. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I vote a 6-0, we have approval of the agenda.
It's actually 5, sorry.
5, that's right, thank you. My math might be bad tonight here, too, along with my voice. All right, this evening, we do have a special recognition. One of our King County officers who obviously serves the city of Samamish, Deputy Matt Martin, who is the School Resource Officer at Eastlake High School, will be given a special recognition from Eastside Fire and Rescue. So, Mr. City Manager, I will turn it over to you for this.
Do we have that pulled up so that we can have a councilperson read this recognition?
I have it queued up, Deputy Mayor, if you'd like me to read it.
That would be great, thanks, Councilmember Gamblin, please go ahead.
Certainly. So this is a memorandum from Ben Lane, the Deputy Chief of the Eastside Fire and Rescue, and memorandum is addressed to Daniel Pengray, Samamish Police Chief, Samamish Police Department, and reads, "Dear Chief Pengray, on the evening of September 2nd," oh, I'm sorry, of the morning of September 2nd, 2021, Eastside Fire and Rescue, along with Bellevue medics, responded to a medical aid call at Eastlake High School. Please accept and pass along our gratitude for the exceptional actions of Deputy Matt Martin, School Resource Officer at Eastlake High School. There is no doubt from the EFNR crews involved that this response with Eastlake staff and assistance to a student experiencing a medical emergency had potentially life-saving effects. Deputy Martin's actions absolutely aided in the rapid treatment and transportation of the student to the hospital. Deputy Martin demonstrated a high level of professionalism in an unusual situation. The care he provided the student and the report that he gave to the EFNR crews would have been considered excellent from any individual trained in emergency medical care. Due to the nature of the call, we did not have an opportunity to relay this feedback to Deputy Martin. Please share our appreciation with your deputy. His contribution during this emergency did not go unnoticed, and again, this is from Ben Lane, Deputy Chief, Eastside Fire and Rescue. And if I might just add a personal note, my son goes to Eastlake. He says that Deputy Martin is well-known, well-liked, and well-respected by the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamblin, for reading that, and thank you to Deputy Matt Martin for his excellence there under pressure, much appreciated. Next, we have public comment pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-28. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual city council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Written comments should be submitted by 5:00 PM end of the business day to our city clerk, El Hashi, at samamish.us and the city council at citycouncil@samamish.us. Verbal comment, please join the Zoom meeting if you would like to give public comment at this time. Information on how to join that was read earlier but is also found under meeting accessibility at the top of our agenda. Up to three minutes of verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. During public comment, the city clerk will ask attendees to press the raise hand button if you wish to give comment. If you're joining the meeting by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. When it's your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you and give you the ability to turn on your webcam if you desire. You'll be notified when you have 15 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments, after which you will be muted at the end of the three-minute comment period. Of note, just please be courteous and respectful when you're making your public comments, and if you would like to submit visuals, i.e. a PowerPoint or photos related to your comments, those need to be emailed in prior to 5:00 PM, or you can just email them to elhashi@samamish.us or the city council, and written comments and your materials will be sent to councilmembers. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone waiting to give public comment this evening?
Yes, we do. We have three attendees who have raised their hands, and I will transfer them to a panelist in the order that they have raised their hands. It is your turn. I will convert you to a panelist and will unmute you and you can turn on your webcam. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please start your comment by stating your name and the city you live in for the record. I will now unmute caller number one. Caller number one.
Who is it?
Yes.
Who is caller number one?
Paula Harper Christensen.
That's me, sorry, I did not hear the name, thank you. My name is Paula Harper Christensen, and I have lived in the same home in Samamish for 34 years. My gratitude goes to the author of the Samamish News publication, Summer 2020, who wrote an article titled "How to Enjoy Snoqualmie Tribe Ancestral Lands in a Mindful Way." The message thoughtfully reminded us that it is through education and awareness that we can integrate acknowledgement and respect into the practices and experiences in Samamish where we live and work. Months ago, I gave a public comment asking the city council to open the meetings with a land acknowledgement that would honor our indigenous community. I have also asked other organizations to open with the same statement of acknowledgement. My social justice groups, my political groups, and even my church here in Samamish all now begin their meetings and service with, "We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Tha'lish people who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian tribe. I thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. Tonight, I request again that our city council respect the history and deep connection of these lands by offering a spoken, living celebration of the indigenous community. Samamish is a diverse community, yet racism in Samamish has been an enduring struggle where residents do not know the history of this place we call home and where people of color consistently get left out. Land acknowledgement alone is not enough, it's merely a starting point. I implore your consideration as a means by which we build real, authentic relationships within our businesses, our neighborhoods, our schools, and may the city council model the practice to our community. Starting somewhere is better than not trying at all. Let us be the light."
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lita, do you have someone else, or no?
Paul Stickney.
Hello, and good evening, city councilmembers. It's good to see your smiling faces this evening. I'm calling about a couple things on an email I sent today about the stormwater retrofit. I think that process, in my opinion, could have had a little more public involvement. There wasn't much at either Planning Commission or your guys' meeting, not a whole lot of time to study it. However, having said that, I think overall, the report is really good, and there were just a couple of points that I wrote in today. One was about stream buffer setbacks being 200 feet. Our code has a range of between 50 to 150, so I think that's a correction. And there was language in the plan about higher density, compact housing, having more stormwater impact. And, man, all the study I've done from Washington State University and several other places say it's just the opposite on a per-unit basis. The amount of stormwater impact is really low, especially when there's underground parking and in-town center and the other centers we have. I think we have Level 3 stormwater flow control and water near sensitive body. I didn't say that right, but anyway, I don't think that's an accurate statement. And then there's some comments about George Davis and some other streams that I'll sum up to say, where a stream can hold fish, I'm all for it, being classified as having fish, but there are several reaches of streams that are intermittent or if emeril or go into outwash soils that are not. So I would just suggest making those changes. Then on your future agenda item tonight, I didn't say that right, later in your meeting, a couple questions on your concurrency stuff. In reading the Bluma EIS and in following concurrency, just have a couple of questions to noodle on, and maybe staff can address this. Did concurrency modeling include all the projects that were in the 2020 to 25 tip that was adopted in 2019 or not? I was at the meeting, I watched Sahali get polled, but I think all the other projects are in, and there are several significant concurrency and lane capacity projects in those. And here's the next question. Does the concurrency model that TSI is...
15 seconds.
Okay, does it include Southeast Fourth and Fall City Road? And I guess that's the last general question, are those things in? Thanks a lot.
We have one more caller, we're transferring them now.
Hello, this is Mary Victor, and I've lived in Samamish 21 years. I do agree with Paul Stickney, who just spoke, on all his points for the stormwater retrofit. His comments were very correct and worthwhile. I also had sent in a very brief feedback on the 400 pages or nearly so of the Stormwater Retrofit and Guidance Manual that's in the packet tonight. It is so that you can meet NPDES requirements, it is important and well-done. A few things that I noted that I put in my email is, it does say that when projects are to be looked at, they'll be studied when the basin plan is. Well, the Inglewood sub-basin plan and the Thompson sub-basin plan and also the Zazaque basin plan have already been done, and for example, two of the top three that they give as examples in the stormwater retrofit are actually in the Inglewood sub-basin. So I think it's really important to know what basins have been adopted, where they are, and people should actually be using those, residents, builders, and developers, and they're not easy to find on the city website. And also, they're listed under Title 24, which is still the interim conspiracy plan, which has been all repealed except for the 24.20 basin plans where it talks about 010 for the Eastlake-Samamish Basin Plan and the Izequah Basin Plan, which is the 020. So that code should be consolidated either through the stormwater amendments that are coming for administrative processes or for the Development Regulations Code. The other thing that I thought was sort of missing is, in one of the three examples that the stormwater retrofit takes, it says, hey, if we do this, we'll get about 59% of the capacity, but it doesn't say what the capacity was before, and it doesn't say like even a ballpark figure, so you don't really know what you're getting for the bang for the buck, or 59% is, you know, 5% more, 2% more, or 55% more than what it was before. So that's just missing in those. Also, stormwater retrofits, I guess, don't have to use the most updated code because that's too burdensome to implement, but I think it's really important. There were 1,200 facilities brought down to 47 with 19 looked at and then 20 put on a list. It's absolutely critical to look where flooding and drainage complaints occur in the city. Those are areas that really need to have something done, and they should be put in for priority consideration, and I'd said this when staff had presented before. They should be the top areas. And then also, other places that you're looking at, if they're watched during the wet season, which runs about October through April, neighbors can watch, city staff, or maybe the maintenance and operations people can help, to see what actually occurs, because sometimes what actually occurs during high-peak storms or intense rain or long-duration days of storms is different than what's modeled, and then you can figure out what really needs to get done. And also, just to let you know, development that wasn't subject to flow control or water quality, that's where the retrofits are needed. It's not the new development, the new code is pretty strong on that. So I didn't think there was a lot of public input, but I like the plan, and those were the things I wanted to just...
Thank you, Ms. Victor. Lita, can you just confirm that that concludes? Who we have in the queue for our public comment before we move on?
Sorry, that is all the hands that I have raised, thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, next on our agenda is an executive session. This is potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. Mr. City Manager, how much time do you estimate that we'll have for this?
I'd estimate 20 minutes, max.
All right, so we will be back around, let's just say 7:15, just to be safe.
I've not seen Karen yet.
Okay, all right, well, let's keep moving here. All right, we've got, next is the consent calendar, so I'd entertain a motion for consent.
I'd like to pull off Item 5, please, which is the stormwater retrofit.
Item 5. Anything else? All those in favor of the consent calendar as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I just have it, consent calendar as amended, as passed. Okay, next is presentation proclamations. We have a proclamation for National Pollution Prevention Week. Councilmember Stewart, would you mind reading that one, please?
Sure.
If you can pull it up.
I sure can.
Thank you.
Although I did get a little aggressive with my back button there, hold on. All right. Oh, it came up really small, sorry. All right, here we go. National Pollution Prevention Week. Whereas the United States Environmental Protection Agency acknowledges National Pollution Prevention Week in honor of the United States Congress passing the Pollution Prevention Act in 1990. And whereas the Pollution Prevention Act encourages pollution prevention by reducing or eliminating waste at the source, by modifying production processes, promoting the use of non-toxic or less toxic substances, implementing conservation techniques, and reusing materials rather than putting them into the waste stream. And whereas the city council's environmental goal is to protect the natural environment through integrated natural resource management. And whereas King County is a leader in implementing programs that reduce and prevent pollution generated by businesses, residents, and municipal operations by partnering with the community to protect our environment. And whereas these services are provided by a diverse workforce with a variety of backgrounds and experience levels that share a common goal of protecting public health and the environment by reducing or eliminating sources of pollution before they enter our environment, including our wetland streams and lakes, and preventing the need for costly controls and cleanup responses. Now therefore, the Samamish City Council do hereby proclaim the week of September 20th through September 26, 2021, as National Pollution Prevention Week. And hopefully, we will all find ways to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. We have another proclamation this evening. This is for Diaper Need Awareness Week. Councilmember Train, would you mind reading that one, please?
So the city of Samamish proclamation, National Diaper Need Awareness Week, September 27, 2021 through October 3, 21. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a significant supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that 1 in 3 mothers experience diaper need at some time while their children are less than 3 years of age, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of 50 diaper changes per week over 3 years. And whereas diapers cannot be bought with food stamps or WIC vouchers, therefore obtaining a sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infants or toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the people of Samamish recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas Samamish is proud to support community organizations that recognize the importance of diapers and helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. Now and therefore, the city of Samamish, the mayor Karen Moran, and the city council do hereby proclaim the week of September 27 through October 3, to be Diaper Need Awareness Week.
Thank you, Councilmember Train. Okay, as we move on, our next section is unfinished business, and because we had Item 5 pulled from consent, I'm going to tackle that one first. Councilmember Stewart, you pulled this item, would you like to speak to it, please?
Yeah, I have to say, I agree with the callers completely that I don't have any major concerns with this. I think that the retrofit project, as has been discussed, is really important, right? We have a lot more developed property that has been developed under older regulations than we will have new property developed under new regulations, so the retrofit projects are critical. However, we have gotten some pretty specific and what seems to be needing correcting feedback, and there has been no official public request for input. This was never discussed in the Planning Commission, it was never presented in full in a meeting, asking for public input or any sort of a public hearing. So I think it's such an important part of what we're doing that I think we need to get more public input, and we need to address the feedback that we've received from the public to correct some of the challenges. So I'd like to see us maybe either do a presentation now or put it on the agenda again at a future meeting where we can, you know, get it back out to the public and request that public input and address some of these issues. Not that I don't want to see it passed, again, I'm fully supportive that we eventually get it passed, but it's important and it needs public input.
Thanks, Councilmember Stewart. Mr. City Manager, do you want to make a comment relative to that? Help guide council? If you're talking, Dave, we've got you on mute.
Okay, we have some members of staff who are here. Let's hear from them about this particular issue.
Good evening, I'm sorry, I was just added back into the meeting, so sorry for the delay. This particular retrofit strategy plan did have quite a bit of opportunity for public comments. It did go through, let's see if I have the list here, it did have a connect... It had a connect Samamish webpage as well as several open houses that public comment was sought during. I do have a document that I can pull up or a slide, just a minute here.
And while Audrey pulls it up, I just want, I don't know if the people on the call know, but we received written public input from the callers with a list of detailed issues, so the public's probably not aware of that, and so I just want folks to know, again, overall, great, great strategy, but there are a couple of issues that I do think need addressing.
Okay, hopefully, I shared my screen correctly, you should be seeing, this was just the list that was provided.
No, Audrey, we're not seeing it yet.
How's that?
There we go.
There we go.
So this was some of the opportunities that we did provide. We had several surveys that went out and stakeholder meetings, and as we said before, there was a connect Samamish webpage that was open to questions and comments throughout the project development.
Did we get any comments?
I do not know, I don't have the answers to that. Our staff that worked on it does not here this evening, but we can provide that information to you later, we...
And again, I don't want to not do something, but we've talked about in the past, you know, the summer months are often rather challenging for people. We often try not to do things only in the month of July or August because we tend to have much lower participation from the community when folks are on vacations and things, so that has been, that has been something that we've really shied away from doing because we don't tend to get a lot of participation on the day, right, in the summer months.
So if I could intervene and ask staff, what would be, is there a critical timeline if we were to delay this? wh- what would be, um, is there a critical timeline if we were, uh, to delay this, uh, another week? Um, and you could gather up some of those answers that would provide the sta-, uh, council input about what kind of feedback, um, you have gotten, how many other comments? But I, I see that, uh, let me turn it back over to the, uh, the chair because there's a couple of council members with questions and comments, and I don't want to interfere with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, I, I move that we approve the resolution adopting the 2021 Stormwater Retro Strategy as written by staff and presented in our agenda packet.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We're now moving on to discussion. Councilmember Gamblin?
Sorry, my hand is lowered.
Councilmember Stewart.
Uh, Count, Deputy Mayor, you haven't spoken yet, so you can go for, if you would like.
Thank you. Um, you know, my only comment here is that, um, staff put up that, the list of opportunities. And while I always appreciate hearing from our public on these things, um, you know, this started in May and concluded, I think in July, I don't have the slide up anymore. There were opportunities and the, the comments we got are from residents that are very plugged in. So I'm not sure if they didn't see those opportunities, didn't provide comments, or did provide comments. I understand we could wait, but I think, I, I struggle a little bit with constantly hitting the brakes on things that we're trying to accomplish because we get new comments. Um, I have a, a sneaking suspicion if they're valid comments, that they may be able to be incorporated. You know, at a time, we, we're not that close-minded on something. But, um, I, I'm, I'm favorable to the motion on the floor. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I, I would like, um, you know, I'd like to hear from staff in terms of the comments that we got from, uh, from Mary Wichter and Paul Stigney. Um, there, there are some very detailed ones that the one, one of the ones that, that one of the, you know, that was provided was that the, the strategy calls for a 200-foot, uh, setback, um, even though our code specifically says it's between 50 and 150. So that seems like we have some issues where it's going to be contrary, and that's going to create challenges, right? Where we have one document that says one thing, but our code says something else. And we know that that tends to create a lot of angst. I have concerns about the, the call-out that says that higher-density housing creates more stormwater runoff when, again, all of the data and all of the studies suggest that on a per-unit basis, that is absolutely not the case. It's quite the opposite, that, that single-family homes, uh, will, will create far more, um, stormwater issues than a, a, an apartment in an apartment building or a condo. So I, I'd love to hear from staff on all of those specific items, like, were those addressed? Or do they have a response to those? Because I don't think we, uh, while, again, I don't want to delay things unnecessarily, I don't think we should approve something that we know has errors in it. And I think that that is not, um, appropriate.
It doesn't have errors.
Okay, I'm going to keep going here with.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Trine, that you don't have the floor.
Okay, Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, it doesn't have errors. Um, also, I'd like to acknowledge that there was plenty of time for public comment. The staff has worked very diligently on this. Um, there has been opportunity to address these issues. I'm actually very comfortable with this going forward. If there aren't any other input, I'd like to call the question.
Oh, there are hands raised. So, there's a motion on the floor to, um, adopt the, uh, City of Sammamish Stormwater Retrofits Strategy. All those in favor, say aye.
I, I had a question on the 150 to 200.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. I don't know why we can't get our questions answered before we vote.
Council, uh, Councilmember Stewart, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize your hand was up when I started calling the question. It wasn't my intention to not get your question answered. But if I may, just call the, the vote as it was just now, it was four, four one, um, was the vote. However, I, I do want you to be able to have an opportunity to get your questions asked. I think it's completely appropriate that you be able to converse with staff just to find out. I, I think, you know, as council, we always reserve the right to pull something back. So, you know, if there is any issues, as you point out with the incongruency on setbacks, I think, you know, staff can always, you know, either they can amend it on the fly, or if it needs to come back to council for some kind of amendment, I think we always reserve that right, Councilmember Stewart, to bring something back up. So if there is an issue, um, I feel confident that we will be able to tackle that.
All right, I, I mean, just, again, Mary Wichter, when she calls out issues on stormwater, I think we should address them. She may be one of the foremost experts on Sammamish stormwater. And it, it worries me when we don't address her concerns. And at least as council, understand how staff has addressed those and why they're not issues before we take a vote. So it's, it's concerning that we would ignore that kind of public comment from someone who's been so involved in this for so long, longer than anyone here on council, that's for sure.
So I don't, I don't, yeah, I, I don't want to categorize it as ignoring a resident. I think we value, or, well, I, I don't personally categorize it as ignoring, um, our, our residents. I think, like I said before, I think you, um, reserve the right to email staff. I would appreciate it if you'd CC council, because I think, you know, if there's something there or if there's not something there, we'll all get that feedback loop from staff. Um, and they, if there are inconsistencies, again, I feel confident that either staff can amend those or bring it back to council for changes. So, um, I still have more hands up, including our city manager. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I'll have staff, uh, address a memorandum back to me. Trying to find out some of those answers, and we'll get something back to the council body just so you have, um, some answers on those particular issues, as well as what kind of comments we got in the process.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, Councilmember Gamblin?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I, I'd just like to bring, point up, I, I never ignore, ignore public comment. I sit here and listen to each and every word. I take notes and I integrate it into my decision-making process, so I would never ignore a public comment that came in. Thank you.
Okay, council, let's move on with our agenda if we can, please. We are now to item number 14, which is the approval of a purchase and sale agreement. Um, approval notice for the Parker property. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, we have, uh, both Anjali Meyer and Kevin Teague on this call to, uh, address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, council. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Kevin Teague, our Deputy Director, has a short presentation for you to report out on the findings of the inspection period for the purchase of the two Parker parcels. In particular, council had asked staff to look into the structures on the property to better understand the potential costs associated with mitigation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
All right, um, thank you, council. Um, and, uh, as Anjali mentioned, my name is Kevin Teague. I'm the Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities, um, and we're here to talk with you about the Parker property. Sorry. Uh, we'll give you first a quick overview of the property and then the results of our findings during the investigation period, and then the status of the King County Conservation Futures Grant. Uh, and then we'll talk about some next steps. So just as a reminder, uh, the Parker property is just under 15 acres. It's in the southwest part of the city, and it is just east of the Parkway. It is comprised of two heavily wooded parcels, each with a single-family home on it. In May of this year, the council authorized the purchase of this property contingent on receiving, uh, a grant, contingent on receiving grant funding for 50% of the purchase price. And staff has submitted, um, a Conservation Futures Grant application in March of 2021. With council's approval, approval of the purchase and sale, um, and entering into that agreement, that commenced a 90-day inspection period, uh, which would have ended, uh, in the middle of August while council was on recess. So we were able to extend that, um, inspection period until September 30, 2021. Before, uh, the end of the inspection period, the purchaser being the city has the right to terminate this agreement. Um, and council had asked, uh, that staff report back to them, um, the results of our findings during the inspection period and before the issuance of the approval notice. Uh, approval notice would be the final step towards the purchase of this property, and this is where we are tonight. During the inspection period, uh, staff was able to complete an ALTA survey, a Phase 1 ESA study, and a hazardous building material survey. Uh, nothing out of the ordinary was discovered in these studies, and they're, uh, the items are, uh, normal, um, like the lead-based paint and asbestos that you would find in houses of this age. In addition, staff looked into the implications of the, uh, potentially historic structure on the site. Staff gathered information from our Department of Community Development, from the Sammamish Historical Society, from the King County Historic Preservation Officer, and then, uh, also reviewed proper, property history through Chicago Title. Uh, we found that one of the homes on the, on the property, um, has the potential eligibility as a local landmark. Um, and we received recommendations from the King County Office of, of Historic Preservation, uh, as to potential mitigation options. We reviewed this menu of options with DCD and confirmed that we can, uh, we can plan on a combination of mitigation strategies, um, that would not exceed $50,000 of investment. And that's what we had planned on, uh, initially when we, when we, um, budgeted this project. I want to talk a little bit now about where we're at with the grant. Uh, on July 1st, we received a letter from the Conservation Futures Advisory Committee that recommended funding of this project. And in August of 2021, the county staff briefed the county council of their funding, uh, recommendations. And at that point, there were no, uh, issues raised from the county council. In September of 2021, the funding award, um, are included in the budget proposal, uh, at the county executive's office. This will be transmitted to the county council. And then, uh, in late fall, usually in November, the county council will vote on that budget. Funding is not guaranteed until this point. I just want to reiterate that funding, the grant funding is not guaranteed until the county budget is approved by the county council. And again, that will probably be in November. Um, we have a reasonable expectation of receiving this grant funding, um, but it is not guaranteed. I want to talk a little bit about the timing. Um, so our inspection period and grant fund contingency was extended until September 30th. Um, and if the city would like to move ahead with this purchase, then this, this, uh, city, the next step is to issue the approval notice on or before September 30th, 2021. Closing will occur within 30 days of the city's issuance of approval notice, which would put us about the end of October. At that time, uh, the city would pay the full sale price and its portion of the closing cost. And then the city would be reimbursed by the Conservation Futures Grant program for half of the purchase price, including a portion of the closing cost sometime in early 2022. Uh, with that, I just wanted to remind you of the financial picture of, of this purchase. The sale price is $3 million, and the Conservation Futures Grant, um, portion would be, uh, just over 1.5 million, leaving the city's, uh, uh, end purchase cost, uh, just over 1.5 million. The land acquisition fund currently sits at, uh, $2,573,000. Um, and then with this purchase, uh, and we're also factoring in about $250,000 of additional land ownership costs, and those would be things that would cover, uh, the house demolitions, the well and septic decommissioning, structural analysis, fencing, and the historic structural mitigation. That would leave the, uh, land acquisition fund at about $806,000. So with that, um, we are looking for direction from council. Uh, here, we've written a potential, um, motion authorizing the city manager to issue the approval notice, um, should the council choose to move forward with this purchase. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Couple council members, I don't feel that. Councilmember Stewart?
I move that we authorize the city manager to issue the approval notice to RM Parker Property Holdings LLC to purchase Park property, King County Tax Parcels, 0624-069-005 and 0624-069-045 at 111818 and 1822-193rd Avenue, Southeast Sammamish, Washington, 98075.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Stewart, did you want to speak to your motion?
No, let's do it.
Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I'm just super excited. Let's move forward.
Councilmember Ross?
Someone, um, share the, the probability of it being final approved. I've, uh, we're really not following the spirit of the agreement that we agreed upon, that is contingent upon the grant funding being provided. And we still haven't had approved grant funding for the 1.5 million dollars pending all the way to November. And we're voting today to authorize it, um, hoping that that gets approved. Uh, how much risk are we taking? Because now we're turning this into a bet rather than a, a true contingency. Can someone please elaborate on how much are we speculating on getting the funding for the grant? And, and what's our likelihood of getting it or not getting it? How can this fall apart on us? Because when we discussed this earlier, without the grant, this is not as feasible of a deal for the city.
Kevin, did you want to take that? Do you want me to speak to that?
Uh, I, I mean, I, what I can tell you is, um, is what I've said in the presentation, it is not guaranteed. Um, we have a very reasonable expectation, um, in, in our, um, discussion with the, um, county staff. Um, our project, uh, scored well, and, um, with the, uh, um, the county staff presenting the, uh, funding recommendation to county council, um, back in, um, August, uh, and then not having any issues raised at that point, it definitely bolsters our confidence in that. But I would not want to, uh, I'm not trying to convince council. I want you to be aware that it is not 100% deal. Um, we, you know, we have entered into, uh, Conservation Futures, um, or we've been awarded Conservation Futures funds in the past. Um, and, um, it, it, all indications are that, that we will get this funding. But again, it's, until it's finalized, it's not final.
Councilmember Ross, did you have anything else?
Well, with budget constraints with the county, has, has the, the situation changed and the probability reduced based on historical success? Has that historical se- success been diminished based on budget constraints by the county? That's my concern. And, and any input on that would be helpful.
Well, it's not something that the staff that we are working with have made us aware of, uh, to cause concern. On the other hand, I think we recently received an email to start thinking about, um, any needs for grants for next year. So, we're not hearing that.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I'm actually next to my cue, so I'm going to jump in here. And I know this is an exciting purchase potentially for the city because there was a development application here. Um, it's a very challenging parcel, pair of parcels actually, to construct on. So I'm not, um, worried, um, that we're going to find, you know, 28 houses down there. We don't purchase. I, I do share Councilmember Ross's same concerns, and I have a few other questions. My first concern is that we're talking to staff. Um, I think I would rather have us hold on this for one week. so that we as electeds can talk to the people that are actually going to be voting on this, which is the electeds. We have a county councilwoman, very receptive to listening to us. I would like to engage her on it and potentially maybe a few other council members. I would like some more guarantee that half of the burden in purchasing this property, which I think would be a fabulous asset, especially considering its constraints, I would like to see it be city property. But we're talking about one and a half million dollars. And while our communications with with staff is favorable, I I would like to ask staff if we held this for one week and brought it back. Would the would that be amenable? I mean, are we upending anything potentially with this by waiting one week so that we can engage elected officials and make sure? I would feel a lot more comfortable voting on this if I had a chance to talk with somebody who's going to vote on the budget.
Yes, we can, we can easily do that. We currently, we don't have a meeting until the fifth of October, so we might extend the deadline past September thirtieth, we'd have to extend it to probably mid-October. Is that right, Kevin?
That that is right. Our our current feasibility time period ends September thirtieth. And so going beyond that would take the approval of the Parkers. It it would seem that, you know, a short time period would be amenable, but we don't know that for sure.
I have an alternate proposal there because later in this meeting, we're going to talk about, or at least at some point, we're going to talk about the potential of moving the November second council meeting. So we're, you know, we shift things too, but for one and a half million dollars, I'll add a September meeting for one item in order to avoid that extension, but to give us an opportunity to ask elected officials questions, to have at least a little bit more reassurance out of the horse's mouth and the ones that hold the vote, that we will indeed, you know, be looking at a favorable outcome and not a a one and a half million dollar expense we weren't anticipating. So I I will be voting no on the motion, not because I don't support this, but because I think we need to be good stewards of our taxpayer dollars and a little bit more reassurance, I think would go a long way. So if the motion fails, I'll be voting to table this till next week. All right, I got a few more hands up. Councilmember Trine.
I just forgot to lower my hand, sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Gamblin.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So Councilmember Ross kind of said what I was thinking. I'm very excited about acquiring this piece of property. I think it's a great idea for the city. I just haven't heard a percent, yes, a percentage chance, what we're whether we're going to get this grant. Is it twenty percent, eighty percent, ninety percent? I'd like to hear that. And my concern is if it falls through, we are just blown through that entire budget. We're going to have to find a million bucks laying around somewhere because we only have four hundred thousand left in that budget for acquisitions, and we don't have another, I believe, close to a million and a half. So I'd rather not put us in that awkward spot if a couple of days or a week could give us some better ideas. So again, excited about the idea. But I think it might be way wise to just kind of sit. Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any more hands up, so there is motion on the table to pass to pass this approval notice. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the nays have it, motion fails. I'd like to make a new motion that we move to table this to next week so that we don't have to extend. I'm looking to find out what the date is, sorry. Twenty eighth, I would be willing to add a meeting on the twenty eighth so we don't go past the deadline for one item. That gives council the opportunity to reach out to county council members and talk to them. And I think that is something that the seven of us can divide up amongst the various county council members, just to kind of pull them on this Conservation Futures Grant to make sure we are well educated in making this vote.
I second that. There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Okay, five vote of five zero, and actually, I see that Karen is on. Karen, are you on? Okay, maybe not. Her name's there. All right, so five vote of five zero, and the ayes have it. So Mr. City Manager, I hate that we're burdening you and staff to come back next week, but I promise it's just this one item, and that gives us an opportunity to reach out to county council members and just get a little bit more assurance for that grant money. Councilmember, I don't know if you want to take a moment just to divide up county council members and or not, but I think it would behoove us to reach out to all of them.
Deputy Mayor from your city manager, we will move this to the meeting of October fifth and get it on the agenda.
No, no.
No, is it?
City manager, the vote was that we were having a meeting next Tuesday for this one item so that we do not have to extend that deadline. That will that will hopefully save staff a wee bit of time on 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 that end of things. It's just a simple one item agenda for for next week.
Okay. Thank you for restating that. I missed that. We will take care of doing that.
Okay. So council, again, do we want to divide this up? Because once we leave this council meeting, we're kind of on our own to reach out to county council members because we can't really coordinate over email, so.
Why can't we coordinate over email?
All right. I'm just I'm just trying to avoid an O P M A instance, that's all.
If we're just calling divvying up two council members to each county council member to each of us, there's no O P M I on, there's no violation. Well, Lisa Marshall, is there a violation if we send an email out as to which council, the county council members we're going to talk to?
Only if a majority of you are speaking to one another, or if if a quorum of you are speaking to one another. So if you're just sending it straight from you to your county council member, no violation. If five of you are, excuse me, four of you start talking amongst yourselves, that's a problem.
Yeah, so therein lies why I think we just need to divide up the county council members, who you're going to reach out to now. If we go on email and all of us are saying, well, no, I want to reach out to Councilmember Lambert. So can everyone just like pick a council member, at least one off?
Well, I'll call Kathy Lambert then.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamblin. How about up the Grove?
I'll take Claudia Valucci.
She's really nice.
Sorry, I'm writing this down. Councilmember Ross.
I can't name one right now.
I'll take Reagan Dunn. Okay, how about for those of you who are not responding, or for those that are not on the, I will just send them someone that they need to reach out to. How about that?
What I was going to suggest, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'll finish off that list and email out everyone who you're supposed to contact. Okay. I did, I think I just saw Karen in the chat. Karen, are you on? Uh, no, she's saying her audio is not working. Okay. I'm just getting back to the agenda here. Okay, so we're moving on to item fifteen, that's an update on the American Rescue Plan Act. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Our Mike Suggs will address this item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Let me just pull up my PowerPoint here very quickly. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor of Council, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I am your Senior Management Analyst. We are also joined on this agenda topic by Rita Bod, our Senior Human Services Coordinator. And tonight, we are here to provide a quick status update on the city's American Rescue Plan Act funding. See if I can move to the next slide. There we go. Just to recap, during the council's July sixth meeting, the council took action to reserve the city's remaining CARES Act funding for two big expenditures. The first was for the Lake Sammamish State Park vaccination site costs, and the second was for Eastside Fire and Rescue's unbudgeted staffing and supply expenditures related to COVID nineteen. The city has not yet paid out this funding because E F R is first attempting to seek reimbursement through FEMA. And if that's successful, this funding will remain with the city and be available to use for COVID nineteen support once again. So at this time, there is no money available in the CARES bucket as it's fully reserved, but we are optimistic that the eight hundred thousand or so that's set aside currently will be reimbursed by FEMA and come back to the city. Also, on July sixth, the council directed staff to claim the first half of ARPA funds in the revenue loss replacement category, which I will touch on in a moment. Now shifting a bit to the ARPA funds as background, you will recall that the city received the first half of its ARPA allocation, nearly two point four million worth from the Treasury in June of twenty twenty one. According to the Treasury's guidance, the city will receive the second half about twelve months after that. So likely in the summer of twenty twenty two is when we'll see that remaining two point four million. Funds can pay for expenses incurred starting on March third, twenty twenty one, and the funds must be obligated by the end of twenty twenty four and spent by the end of twenty twenty six. The ARPA legislation outlines four broad categories within which the city may use the funds. And the city's focus is on number three, which is highlighted in blue, providing government services to the extent of revenue loss due to COVID, which is the topic of our next slide here. Let me just flip back real quick. And then also, I just want to mention in exhibit one of tonight's agenda bill, we've covered some information on some of the topics that council has previously discussed, and we'll also touch on some of them as part of this brief presentation tonight. Again, using the funds for revenue loss replacement was one of the four eligible uses outlined in ARPA. And this is an interesting point because revenue replacement was specifically disallowed under CARES, but it was a main focus under ARPA. So after an in-depth review of the Treasury's guidance, our finance staff calculated a shortfall from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty of about four point, or excuse me, about four million. That meant the city could claim its entire first half ARPA allocation in the revenue loss replacement category, and that's what the council chose to do on July sixth. The benefit of claiming funds in this revenue loss category is that it allows for the maximum flexibility when using the federal dollars as they can be used for any, quote, government services. The non-exhaustive list here on the slide is what the Treasury mentions in their guidance of how you can use this funding, and it includes things such as the maintenance of infrastructure, building new infrastructure, health services, public safety, and others. Again, a non-exhaustive list. The only real restriction that the Treasury mentions is that the revenue replacement funds cannot be used to replenish a rainy day fund to service debt or to pay settlements or judgments. When looking at the, when looking at using the revenue loss funds for the maintenance or building of infrastructure, some example projects that might might include the Fire Station eighty two renovation, the Lewis Thompson Road Tight Line Project, or even the overlay program. But really, there are any number of possible projects that could use this flexible funding, and the city manager intends to discuss this as part of the upcoming mid-biennial budget process that will start with council next month. There's a bit of discussion in exhibit one of tonight's agenda bill about the eviction moratorium and the rental assistance efforts at the local and county level. Staff, Rita specifically, has spoken with three of the main rental assistance providers serving Sammamish, which includes Hope Link, Saint Vincent de Paul, and Issaquah Community Services. Saint Vincent and Issaquah Community Services are two of our smaller nonprofits, and they currently have approximately half of their funds remaining from the COVID grant funding allocations that council approved last year and earlier this year. And like many providers, they have both generally been referring people who are interested in receiving rental assistance funds to the King County Eviction Prevention and Rental Assistance Program, or EPRAP, particularly in cases where the resident has significant amounts of overdue rent. And this is because EPRAP, the county's program, can help with up to nine months of rent arrears and up to three months of future rent, which is significantly more assistance than these two local organizations typically provide. The county has received about three hundred forty million for rental assistance and has, as the council may have seen, getting some press recently over the slow pace of its distribution. And more recently, they have been working hard to expand their staffing capacity to increase the pace, and it appears that they have done so. Rita was on a call recently with a King County representative who noted that the county is now allowing applicants to self-attest to income and other eligibility requirements, and landlords can also self-attest to their ledgers. So this means that there's less paperwork for the county to process and less verification to slow down the distributions, but obviously, potentially with a little less control over the process. Hope Link, which is the largest rental assistance provider serving Sammamish, has distributed the city's COVID grant funding. Like the other two providers, Hope Link has generally been referring folks to the county's program unless there is an immediate need for assistance. And staff have had preliminary discussions about their funding needs, Hope Link's funding needs. And if there is interest, staff can return with more information and potentially a proposal for the council's consideration in October. Staff also received some good news that the Imagine Housing property that's located in Sammamish was funded through EPRAP, their landlord program specifically, and that brought thirty, all thirty of the residents who are behind on rent up to date and paid through October. And finally, a common thread that we've heard in discussions with these three providers is that there's been significant uncertainty about rental assistance and about the effect of the eviction moratorium ending. We learned today that the city of Seattle extended their eviction moratorium to January of twenty twenty two, and we likely won't find out whether Governor Governor Inslee will also extend his eviction moratorium bridge proclamation, at least until the last minute, which is what has occurred in the past. The last two slides here are seeking council's direction on the ARPA expenditure approval process. This was outlined in the agenda bill, so I'll just go over it quickly here. As noted in the agenda bill, staff developed the policy to internally manage the ARPA funds for compliance with federal requirements, things like invoicing, reporting, and approvals. It includes a process whereby departments can seek the city manager's approval to tap into the ARPA funds, and the intent is that it would function similarly to how the city handled its CARES Act funding. And this means that the city manager would continue to be responsible for approving necessary operational or ongoing expenditures such as P P E, technology purchases, and contractors, while the city council would approve any other programs or large commitments such as grants or infrastructure expenses. And before I wrap this up for council's feedback, I just want to show the requests that staff have submitted to the city manager to date to give an idea of the types of expenditures we're talking about. Keep in mind that these requests essentially earmark funds and allow the departments to proceed with incurring expenditures. However, any individual invoices or contracts entered into would, of course, still require final city manager approval or the council's approval for anything over the city manager's city manager's signing authority of fifty thousand. If the council concurs with this approval process described in the previous slide, the city manager will continue to move forward with expending ARPA funds for these operational purposes. And that concludes my presentation. I will hand it back over to the mayor or the deputy mayor for any feedback on the approval process or any other questions the council might have.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. I don't see any hands up. Okay, there we go. Councilmember Stewart.
Excellent. This is, this is exciting. We get, we're getting over two million dollars just in our first half, which is great. I have a question, which is if we're getting this money, don't we then potentially, right, I mean, it's a decision of council, we could use the eight hundred thousand in CARES funding to actually get out into the community and help and hold eight hundred thousand of this back in case FEMA doesn't come through, because we do have this extra money. I am hearing every day of more and more local businesses closing, and I really feel like we should be getting that money out into the community and helping them. So is that, Mike, would that be a possibility that we could use some of this money to help the community? We never did do another round of grant funding for our small businesses here in Sammamish.
I'll go ahead and.
I'll go ahead and field that. I have, the question has come up before, and what we have here is we would be using the ARPA funds as federal funds for reimbursement, and that won't wash. We cannot do that. That's why we continue to hold on to the CARES funds in reserve, because they can be used for submittal to FEMA. But the ARPA funds aren't in the same category. That's why we've kept them separate. And right now, as Mike has said, to be redundant on that issue, EFOR is moving ahead to see if they will qualify for the reimbursement. And if they do, and they hope to here by December, then we will come back to the council and free up that money. Otherwise, the prudent thing to do is to hold that CARES money for the FEMA. Then we would apply, and if we aren't granted it, we've got the money sitting there. But we hope we are.
Yeah, that makes sense, and I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager. I guess, you know, I appreciate that we want to be prudent and hold on to that money, but while we're holding it, right, so in, you know, eight months or so, however long, you know, we've really had this money since last, that CARES Act money since last year, so over nine months, businesses are closing their doors. And so, you know, I guess another thing we could do could, I mean, even if ARPA money can't be directly used to fund, you know, small business grants, we're getting over $2 million. We could pull $800,000 from our funds to do business grants, because we are getting this revenue that we weren't counting on when we made our budget. And then if we do get that reimbursement from FEMA, we will have that $800,000. So I still think, you know, we are not doing our community, we're not being, you know, we're not doing what the CARES Act funding was intended to do, and this funding was intended to do, and we have folks in our community who are shuttering their businesses, and I feel like we could really do more there. So, you know, I don't know if anybody else on council will be interested in trying to help our small business community, but it just breaks my heart every time I see more businesses closing.
I don't see any more hands up at this time, so I know our city manager is, as it says on the bottom, they're seeking confirmation that this process is congruent with what council intended. So I think the silence is agreement. Okay, there we got a hand up. Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I think we're headed in the right, I confirm that the process that's outlined under this section, that's, that aligns with what my intent is as one of seven, and the direction that the city's headed with this funding. Seems like we're being wise and we're being prudent. Seems to be the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ross?
I think it's a solid plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is congruent with what we intended, Mr. City Manager, so appreciate staff's work on this.
Okay, we will proceed. Thank you very much, and as soon as we have any other information, we will bring it back to you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
In the chat, she was going to call in for audio. Karen, do we have you or no? Apparently, we don't. Okay. All right, we're moving on here. Our next item is discussion on traffic concurrency policies and potential next steps, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Oops, sorry, on my button. The next item on the agenda tonight is under New Business, Traffic Concurrent Policy, Potential Next Steps, Public Works Director Jeff Elkes is going to brief the council and initiate this discussion. Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, loud and clear. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay. So what I've done this evening is put together a few slides. They're almost all, the information is from the council agenda item itself. It's a repackaging of the information with highlights going forward. So staff is seeking policy guidance on this topic of transportation concurrency modeling related to financial commitment. Our opening statement for policy guidance is this, it appears that staff, to staff, that project number TR-54, which is the intersection of 228th Avenue Southeast, Southeast 40th Street, which would involve building a new southbound acceleration lane, may not have, quote, "a financial commitment," given that it's not in the current budget and that a new tip has not recently been adopted. And if this is the case, then should this project be removed from the concurrency model? The ramifications of doing that is it's highly likely that any application for concurrency certificates going forward would be denied because there's not a financial commitment to have that project go forward. There's a different series of combinations and options and alternatives we'll discuss So here's some context. Projects identified in the tip that have a reasonable financial commitment, they are identified to be entered into the traffic concurrency pipeline model as being complete within a six-year window. Inclusion of projects that are in the concurrency model caused the model to respond with capacity at that location for the included projects, because the model assumes that the projects will be built within a six-year period. This allows traffic concurrency certificates to be issued for projects with traffic impacts on those roads and intersections until a new and/or different failure is identified. The last tip that the city adopted was in June 2019. At that time, there were numerous projects on the list. These three projects in question at the intersections were identified in the last tip adopted. Those projects are shown here in this slide. The three concurrency failing intersection projects at the moment include Sahaly Way and Northeast 28, and the solution to that is the need for a signalized intersection. The other, another project is 244th Avenue Southeast at Southeast 32nd Street. Here, we want to add an always stop. And lastly, the seventh project shown here, number seven, 228th Avenue Southeast at 40th, needs a channelization modification improvement. The last tip clearly identified that those projects were in that tip at that time. The dollar values are shown here, and we have actually budgeted the first project shown here, TR-45 was budgeted for $150,000 in the current 21-22 budget. The dollars associated with TR-53, a portion of the dollars were defined in the current budget. And then lastly, TR-54 did not have any budget identified in the current budget. And so this is recap here. Part of the reasoning is, is we have fully adopted for one of the projects, we have partial funding for a second project, and we did not identify any funding whatsoever on the other. Another factor that comes into play for staff is that during deliberations with the city council in Maine and June related to preparing a draft tip, staff understood that council was not ready to move forward on major updates to the tip at that time, primarily awaiting the outcome of the BLOOMA EIS as recommended by staff at that time. So the policy guidance, just to recap here, we're trying to understand, does a key project have a financial commitment? And if it doesn't, it probably should be taken out. And the options that we need to deal with or consider include, there are six of them that staff has come up with, but the first one would be is regardless, we continue the past policy until such time as we can and will adopt a new tip. I anticipate a tip to do occur definitely by June of next year, but the council could embark upon that much sooner. Another financial commitment could be that during the mid-biennial budget process, staff comes back and makes a formal request towards funding for the one project that doesn't have any identified funding associated with it. A third solution could be formally adopting a funding commitment that says, hey, we plan to do something in the future once BLOOMA gets done, and we plan to adopt the tip. But it makes a financial commitment, if you will, stating that in the future, we'll make adjustments to make that work. A fourth option is, is we can embark upon a limited TIP between now and the end of the year. It would include this project and a handful of others, as worked out with staff and the city council. The last two options here are working with developers, because the city code allows city developer agreements to deal with the individual failed intersections and having developers make a contribution towards the project, and we would enter into some kind of developer agreement to make that work. Lastly, 100% of the deficiency until such time as the council makes a revision to the tip could be on the development community. So in summary, we're not clear that we have a financial commitment for a project that wasn't, didn't have budget dollars, but did appear on the last tip. These are the six options, and maybe there's a seventh that you want to discuss, but staff is looking for guidance, policy direction from the city council on this matter. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
You. All right, I'm gonna look for some hands here to ask staff questions. All right, Councilmember Trine?
Yeah, I like option number A6. And if I had to take a second shot at this, after looking at it, if I'm not mistaken, Jeff, the A4 was the motion that I made to pass the tip, kind of a stripped-down version of a tip that would meet the $7 million budget over the period of REIT money. Is that correct on A4?
I believe that's the case. My memory serves me correct, you had made a motion in that regard. We did have enough budget for a handful of the projects, but not all of the projects in the tip. It was a two-year budget window snapshot in time that we took for the 21-22 budget.
So that intersection may not have been in there?
It was not in there on that list. It was in later years, as shown in the old tip, and we were, you know, with a revised potential new tip. It was clearly shown within the six-year window.
So if we approve, if we were to move and do an A4 option, we would also then have to do something with the budget?
Ideally, you would have to, yes.
Yeah, we'd have to put the money in the budget to actually meet the financial commitment to that project.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you have a tip that you adopt, the tip assumes that you're going to build something within six years, that is your financial commitment.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be in the budget, it just has to be in the document that says you're going to do something.
And then we work with the city manager and the finance department to come up with a budget that would actually fund it?
That's correct.
All right. I'm still, that would work as well for me.
Councilmember Ross?
Fine with five and six, allows development to contribute to fixes as needed, absent any passage of the former processes, A1 through 4. However, I still think we need to press forward very aggressively on a multi-year budget process. We can get a six-year budget together that helps us align and fold in both the funding and cost of projects over the tip period, we can align the tip with the budget and truly understand what can be funded, what is funded, and we get into the harder discussions on, hey, we need, do we need a bond, do we need other revenue contributions to fund this or not? But when we keep doing the biannual funding and do a multi-year tip, there's a disconnect. We're not fully planning our destiny. Or alternatively, by doing a six-year tip and assuming that's going to be completed, always fails because we haven't planned it in our budget for six years. So I think we should march towards, and if it's an option, A8, is get a multi-year, six-year budget that aligns and integrates with the six-year tip, so we can put together a tip that truly represents a funding scenario.
One of the things that we, Public Works related to that...
Oh, is that, am I on? Yeah, let's, yeah, we can hear you, Karen, but let's let Jeff decide here.
I was just going to add that one of the things that staff is bringing forward to council when we do a tip is clearly identifying reasonable funding possibilities for each individual project, so that we're crystal clear going forward. There isn't this a big gap or this, you know, in years past, it was, hey, bonds will take care of it maybe, you know, or grants will take care of it. We want to be clear and specific going forward, and so we'll be deliberate about that when we bring it back to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, Jeff, a couple of questions. One is, didn't you send us a memo that said you already removed these projects from the traffic model?
We've done the analysis to remove them, but it's my, after talking with city manager and legal, we believe this is a policy discussion for the council. It isn't a, or should not necessarily be a staff-directed thing, so we have reviewed the budget. We found that actually of the three projects, two were actually identified in the budget. We have a, we have one project that isn't. We want this, it's our opinion that it's a council policy direction to discern and define what a financial commitment is going forward.
So you put them back in the traffic model, because your memo clearly said you had pulled them out, so you put them back in?
They're currently in, that we are receiving concurrency certificate applications. I think there are three pending. We're treating it the same at the moment until we get guidance and direction. So what we're doing is trying to be transparent, above-board, and bring policy items to council such as this. So that was a correction and clarification.
And were they, were they in the traffic model or not when you did the BLOOMA EIS analysis?
Yeah, they had been taken out in the BLOOMA EIS analysis, if I recall correctly, so that we showed all of the potential deficiencies as a result of the policy change.
Okay, and aren't we required by law to fix existing failures, and all three of these are existing failures, correct?
The concurrent, the state law says that you should plan to make improvements, to fix your deficiencies, ideally within a six-year window.
Okay.
And unless challenged by somebody in the community, many agencies kick the can down the road, and it keeps going on and on and on until challenged. But ideally, a good city that's planning, a city that plans well is able to accomplish this in a six-year window.
Okay, and Councilmember Ross already kind of touched on this, but just to clarify for the public, currently, we have transportation improvement plans, which are for six years. We have not approved a new one since 2019, so for the last two years, we have not been in compliance with state law and have not passed a tip, but we have the 2019 one in place. That is a six-year tip. Our budget cycle is two years. So it is reasonable practice that says, and we as council have always put a great deal of care, at least since I've been on the council, that we have a six-year tip, it has lots of projects on it, we only assign funds to ones that we have some very reasonable intention of working on and correcting in that six-year period. And we've been very careful to put, you know, if you've got another project, we put it out in the future, past six years, and the policy has been that if it has funding to complete it within that six-year window, it's included in the traffic model. And all those other projects, which are millions and millions of dollars, we've put out past that six-year window, and those are not included. I don't believe that it is reasonable for us to say we are only going to put in our traffic model the things that are in our biennial budget, because, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but most, most road projects take way longer than two years to plan it and execute it and get it done. So if we only did the ones that were in a two-year window, it would be very little, correct? If anything?
Transportation projects can take 20 years.
But reasonably, they don't take that long, right? I mean, most of them don't take 20, but they certainly take more than two, right?
They take more than two, and they can take, you know, five, six, eight, 10 years. It depends on the project. It depends on the project, funding, allocation, all kinds of factors.
How many, how many road projects are we currently working on right now?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't have that number in my mind.
Ballpark, 100?
Yeah, I don't have that question in my mind. I'm not able to answer that.
So you have no idea whether we have one or five or 10 projects in, in, in process right now?
Councilmember Stewart, you've asked them three times. I'm going to tell you the same. I don't have that information.
Wow, okay. All right, and just to clarify, when we, when we say that the developer community would have to pay, what happens when an individual comes in and wants to get a concurrency certificate? If they're not a developer, they're just a person who has a piece of land and they want to build a house. How does that work in A6 or A4?
It would be the same way.
They would have to pay for it.
They would have to pay for it or partner with the city through a development agreement. Because they are quote a developer, maybe not in the definition that you're using, but development is development, whether it be one house or multiple houses.
Got it. So I just want to clarify for the public that we, because the wording here is a little bit misleading. We call it developers and development community, but this means anybody, any individual who comes in and wants to apply for concurrency certificate would be expected to pay for, if we took A6, they would be expected to pay for the entirety of that road project if they were going to have a single car on that road.
Correct.
Okay. And you said that the state law said that we should, but I've been led to believe in the past that we are legally obligated to have a plan to fix our existing failures. Can we get clarification on that?
That's a piece of information we can circle back and bring city attorney on board.
Is the city attorney no longer on the call?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at who's on. Go ahead, Lisa. You're on mute.
I'm here, Pam.
Yeah, so my question is, are we legally obligated as a city to correct existing failures?
GMA states that we will address existing failures or have a financial commitment to do so within a six-year time period, yes.
Okay, so we are in fact legally obligated to do this. Okay, thank you. So if we, if we took, Lisa, is it your opinion, if we went with something that didn't provide that financial obligation, wouldn't we be running afoul of the law if we picked one of these other options?
I'm not sure and prepared to say that we would be running afoul of the law. We would, we need to have a plan or a financial commitment to correct the failure within a six-year period. And I think what Jeff's presentation to you tonight is aimed at is trying to help him understand what the definition of financial commitment means.
Okay, because when you first answered the question, you said we have to have a financial commitment. You didn't say we just have to have a plan. And I think that is probably an important distinction. If the state law says we have to have a financial commitment, that seems pretty clear to me. And just having, you know, a plan, but not us actually having a financial commitment seems like we would not be meeting the law.
A part of that, what you're talking about is our internal definition of what a financial commitment is. And I don't have that document right in front of me, the SMC that has that. But it was clearly stated in the past memos that I sent council, but I can dig that back up and, you know, create a, I guess, an answer to the clarity of financial commitment at the state level and in our city code related to the modeling that we're trying to deal with.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Moran. Karen.
Yes, so Lisa, maybe you can go back and you can refresh my memory, but I believe you told us that we did indeed have a, passed a transportation plan because we had the one that was passed in 2019. And then I had a question for Councilmember Trine. But first I want Lisa to confirm that that indeed we, we still are working off of a past transportation plan because we have the one that we're working off of from 2019 because that's good for six years.
Correct. We have the 2019 tip that we're currently working on.
All right, okay. So then Councilmember Trine, if you can, I'm going back to a vote that did not pass and it was this spring, but it was a three, four vote. And I'm trying to remember the exact wording, but it was a vote that was to, to try to implement to get, that was to take in, in particular, these three failures, if that was, if I remember correctly. Do you remember that, how you had worded that specifically?
I don't remember how I worded it specifically, but it was a motion to adopt a tip that included projects that could be funded with the current REIT allocations to Public Works.
Right, and it was these three failures. So it's not like we haven't tried because it lost three to four. So it's not like we haven't tried this. So I'm just trying to go backwards and look that it isn't necessarily Public Works' fault that they, they did the correct thing because they took the direction from council because that motion failed. And we didn't do anything wrong because we're working from a past, a past tip which passed in 2019. And so just to keep the public up to speed. So we're not doing anything wrong from that and Public Works isn't doing anything wrong because they indeed did follow the direction of the council by taking the direction from that vote, if I read that correctly.
Yep, we support that.
Okay, that was all.
Any more hands up? I'll throw in my two sons here. It's, you know, I, before, most of the people sitting on here were on the council, Councilmember Hornish and I were fighting hard to define what it meant to have a financial commitment in place. And that was largely because we used our tip like a parking lot to throw projects on so they'd be grant-eligible, but they didn't ever actually get constructed. And Issaquapine Lake Road is consistently my poster child for something that's been on the tip for like 13, 14 years. And, you know, it's, it's still not constructed. So I struggle a little bit here because, you know, we have a few projects that are not going to break the proverbial bank here. I think what I read in the agenda bill is that we have authorized $150,000 for TR45. So the, the motion that the mayor is referring to is kind of a non-issue when we have that already funded. There was partial funding for TR53. That was, I think, it says removed because of Bluma. So that really leaves TR54. And I, I have a hang-up personally. And I think the reason that the motion failed is because we had funding for TR53. And I struggle with putting a traffic light on Sahale when we haven't figured out what we're doing with Sahale wholesale yet. But the other project, and I hate referring to them by their numbers because that's meaningless to the general public who might be listening here. But TR54, which is 228th and Southeast 40th, it's an acceleration lane. It's listed here at 810. I feel like that's an uptick in price from what we saw originally that was given to us on the tip. Maybe I'm mistaken. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. But that's neither here nor there. I think these are things that we could potentially remedy through the mid-buy process. An acceleration lane there, that intersection's been failing for quite some time. And there's, you know, construction going on in Issaquah that is going to further impact this intersection. So, you know, I, I concur with staff's assessment that, you know, council has given a direction that we don't like the tip to be a parking lot where you just go throw stuff and say like, wow, see, look, we're going to build it in six years, but then we never do. And so I think there's probably a hybrid on which financial commitment. I, you know, I think there's a possibility for commitments, like, you know, a combination of these. You know, it's, it's possible if there was some urgency, a limited, you know, tip could be done. But I, I wonder what staff's ability is to execute on that. And then knowing this council, trying to adopt a limited tip, my God, we're already at the mid-buy budget already. Because here we are, it's September, where we're adding a meeting next week. But other than that, like, we're going to be faced with the mid-buy budget here very shortly. So I figure if there is an opportunity for a project to get in there, I, I think that council should consider that. But I think by and large, you know, the comments that Councilmember Ross stated, which is, we have to be able to plan further out than just the two years. So, you know, when, when we put something on the tip, I think the council needs to operate and staff likewise then can take direction from council that if it's on the tip, we're building it in six years or we're not just going to stick it in the parking lot. That's my sentiment. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, Jeff, could you go back to the slide that has the, the section of the tip for me for a second? Do you mind? There we go. And this may be hard for folks at home to read, but I just want to reiterate, and Deputy Mayor is absolutely right. The tip has a lot of projects on it. And again, in 2017, I think it was, or 2018, I mean, we, we said, look, like, we need to have a lot of these projects on the tip because we want to be able to start going after grant funding and other reasons. So there are a lot of projects on the tip. So if you look at the very first project up there, for example, there are $0 for the next six years. And then there's the, you know, sort of future years. Oh, wait, that's a bad one. It does have money there. But if you scroll down, if we could scroll down, you would see that there are some projects that don't have any money in the first six years. It's all in the future years project or column. And so I don't mind having this be a parking lot where we say, these are only going to be funded for future years because we need to have staff thinking about it, looking at it, you know, trying to decide what those priorities are, et cetera. And so we made the decision in 2018 that the only thing that would go into the traffic model are projects that are, that have funding that would fully fund them in that six-year period. Now, again, there is always, and every city has this, the incongruency of you have a six-year tip and you have a two-year budget. But the intention here is that we have to be able to start planning out beyond six years if for no other reason, some of these projects, you'll see money over multiple years because we have to do planning before we can do the execution. And so we need to start getting things on here and being able to show that we're going to have some money in certain years and more money out in the future so that we can constantly have things in planning because we want our public work staff to have things, to have plans that they are ready to go with as we have funding available for execution. So there's a lot going on and we shouldn't tie the hands of our public work staff to say you can only put the projects that are going to be complete in six years. We want to be able to have all of those. So I agree with Deputy Mayor, we don't want to just have some jumbled parking lot. That would be bad. But there's a method to this madness. And so I still agree that if it's on the tip and we've put the funds to fully complete it, whoop, Jeff left. Can you go back to the spreadsheet view? I like that view. That's where, that's where I was happy. So if you look at this, we have those projects fully funded in a six-year window. Our budget currently only goes out through 2022. So yeah, maybe, you know, that project isn't officially funded by our budget, but it is a, a, a project that has been needing to be corrected. It is potentially, you know, it is in the zone where the new school is opening up and there's a lot of construction down there. And it is a public safety issue. So, you know, people are trying to pull out there and they don't have a place to pull to. Same thing with the Sahale Way project. That intersection is also a public safety issue. So if this, if this council is going to say, we're only going to put stuff in the traffic model that we're going to get done in the next two years, I think that's highly unreasonable. And I do think that that runs afoul of the law. And I don't want to see us change our, our, our tip to tie the hands of, of the, sorry, of the Public Works Department because I think that they need to be able to show us what all the projects are. The public needs to be able to see all these. They need to see what some of those dollar values are and what's going to be worked on in the next six years and what's out in the future. So yes, there's stuff out there. I think that a lot of that, you know, everything's a parking lot and it's a jumbled mess. We've cleaned that up a lot and we do not have all of these projects in our traffic model. Only the ones, correct me here if I'm wrong, Jeff, but the only projects in the traffic model right now are ones that are fully funded between now and 2025, which isn't even the six-year window now, right? We're only looking out four years. So we're not even doing the six-year window. We're only doing a four-year window. Is that correct?
The, the model is relying upon the assumption that the projects shown here in this tip for the pipeline model for concurrency are in. Therefore, even though there's failures, they're assuming that they're going to be built in that window and therefore it issues concurrency certificates.
Right, but again, only the ones that are fully funded between now and 2025. It does not have every project that's on the tip in the traffic model.
It is the ones that are, that are identified within the six-year window to be fully funded in the tip, not the budget, but the tip.
Correct.
And that's the policy statement and the, and the city code, it says that as well.
Correct. So line item one, for example, is not in the traffic model because we're going to work on that now, but we're not going to complete it, right?
I believe that could be the case.
Exactly. And so we could go down here, but all of the ones that are not, all the ones that still have a future years number are not in the traffic model. So it's a very small subset. And so again, I, I know you don't have any idea, but I think that one thing that's very interesting is if we were to actually look at the entire tip, there aren't that many projects on the tip that aren't yet done that are in the traffic model. There are only a couple. And these are the only three that are addressing existing failures, correct?
These are the three that have intersection failures only in the pipeline model.
Right. So if we as a city can't even get the three projects that have existing failures done in a six-year window, then shame on us, right? It's just three. Like, we should be able to get these done. And, and we, you know, whatever help, and Jeff, I'm not blaming you. When I say the city, I mean the collective, all of us, right? That city council needs to prioritize it and make sure you have the money you need. I will also call out to the public that we are a city that has no debt. So when Jeff talks about, you know, realistic, reasonable funding models, bonding for a road project to correct an existing failure is very reasonable because we have no debt. So for us to take a bond, if, if it came to that, which I don't believe it would for these dollar figures, these are not ginormous dollar figures. We're getting, you know, over $2 million from ARPA. We could put that to, you know, infrastructure projects. So there are many ways we can fund this. But if we had to go to bonding, that would not be unreasonable for us to take a small bond to do a road project. Council manic, if people don't know what that is, that means that the council can vote on those bonds. We don't even need to put it out on a ballot. We could approve those bonds to fund these three projects that only totals just over $2 million for all three of them collectively, correct?
Yeah, the math is, you're spot on, gentlemen.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilmember Stewart. Oh, Jeff, will you please go back to that? Sorry, that is, I live off these Excel spreadsheets and I was actually admittedly kind of sad when it changed away from this format because, because we've had this type of format for a while. It really makes it easy to compare tips from year to year. But I don't disagree with anything that Councilmember Stewart just said. And that is, what council stated was that if we show funding in the six-year window, we consider that to be a commitment of funding. And therefore, based on what I'm looking at from what was passed in 2019, is there is a financial commitment to the dollars that are in those highlighted yellow boxes there. But what I also want to point out is what has traditionally happened in the city. And I can show it on here because there's Issaquapine Lake Road again with its funding and it's still not done, right? And it's not going to be done. So I think therein lies the problem is that we love to put stuff on the tip. We can say we're going to fund it in six years. And the problem that we have had as a city perpetually is that we put projects on the tip. We say we're going to complete them in the six-year window. That's how they end up in the model. We model against improvements on our roadway system, be it at an intersection or be it on capacity. If you're using V over C, the project doesn't happen. The development comes in and we further exacerbate the, the traffic issues that we're having in the city. I don't know how we resolve this problem, I'll be honest, because I struggle as a council member. I don't know how we resolve this problem, I'll be honest, because I struggle as a council member. We have to make forward progress on, on making improvements. Again, as Councilmembers Stewart pointed out, this is not a huge amount of dollars that we're talking about with these three projects. But it isn't about this, it isn't about $2 million, it isn't about these three projects. It's about principle and what we do and we're, what we are trying to do as a city, which is steer away from saying we're going to do something, putting it on a tip, you know, throwing some numbers in there and saying, look, it all works out. We only have a small snapshot of what is on this particular tip here. The real important meat and potatoes is at the bottom of this thing, which we can't see, which is the fact that we do or don't have the funds to actually complete everything that's sitting on here because it's cut off on the bottom. We can't see the financials here, which is really what's important. And so, um, you know, I, I feel like pounding my, you know, my hand on the desk because I, I want to complete projects and I want a tip that actually says we're going to do it and I want to go do it. And somehow these projects get on here and we don't do them. And I, uh, you know, I'm frustrated and, and I want to change that. And I think we're trying to make that change so that when we put it on here and it's got funding in that six year window, that we're saying, we are going to go and do that project. I don't know how we get there, um, but, but we need to. But again, you know, we're relying on a tip that says Issaquapine Lake Road has had, you know, $3.3 million spent on it.
Deputy Mayor.
I got our city manager who's got his hand up, so I'm going to let him speak first.
Thank you. A number of the points that you made is exactly why this is up here. I want to give credit to Jeff on this issue because when he began working here and I told him of the stories that council had said here on the dais and individually to me, um, about the reoccurring problem of items getting on here and not being addressed. And if you all, you've all lived in the community, certainly much, much longer than I have. But you deal with traffic and you've deal, dealt with a lot of development. And when you keep moving the ball, you don't have a solid commitment with which to deal with development. A lack of a master planning in your traffic. And I, because of the issues that we've had to be faced with, dealing with this EIS and really getting into the nitty gritty of what the law says and how we're doing things and about this funding issue. And this funding issue is fundamental to where I think you should be thinking about going from here. And that's why we're going to do our financial forecasting. But Jeff and Victor and Lisa and Peter and Josh started to really figure this thing out and had sort of an epiphany. Because it wasn't just until, what, 2019 that the definition of funding was all over the map. And ministerially, someone made a decision that having bonding capacity was sufficiently enough for a financial commitment. And they ministerially made that decision and concurrency certificates were run and issued. That makes the point that we, financial commitment is urgently important. And you need to be able to figure out how you're going to afford it for these concurrency issues and how you're going to afford these projects. Otherwise, you will perpetually continue to punt the ball down the road because it's just sort of what you do. You, you get myopic to the two year issue, um, at some point during the budget process. And then you back away from it and you look at long-term planning. And well, we could move this and we could do that for a lot of good reasons. But you, you need to try to stick to a plan and the analysis of that and committing the work to the planning and then the design and getting things shovel-ready and getting them in the po, the, the pipeline, not just for concurrency, but for your other plans as well and your other capital projects. So again, I want to recognize a team of consultants and with Jeff at the helm to sort this out so that you can have this conversation that we're having tonight. Because it wasn't, it wasn't evident in looking at those tapes from 2019. So we're making progress. This was put on here to stimulate the, the dialogue. So you weren't being hit with this in the mid-budget, mid-by-budget discussions. So that you could have a constructive dialogue, be thinking about this and start making commitments. Because there still is no commitment other than to spend REIT or spend your reserves. And to fix all of these problems, you got to come up with some money somewhere, somehow. Because we still have a budget to balance going forward in the future, as Councilman Ross alluded to in the beginning of the dialogue. But thank you for a moment to, uh, say a couple pieces on this and recognize staff and our consultants. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. City Manager. I think, um, it's, I, I, as a council member, I appreciate that staff is bringing this back or that you're bringing this back to us. As a policy-related decision, I think it's important, you know, to publicly state kind of the direction that we're attempting to go and allow us the opportunity to explain to the public the rationale behind it. Um, so I think that's where you hear my frustration come out on what's happened in the past because it got us into the bind we're in currently and we're trying to get ourselves out of that. And there's a lot of tentacles on digging out of that hole. So, thank you. All right, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I just, uh, Jeff, if you can go back to that spreadsheet, uh, I like the Deputy Mayor, I love the spreadsheet. Um, I just, I just want to. 25 cents? I'll pay you every time we go there. I'm fine with that. I'm totally cool with that. Um, it's worth it to me. Uh, I just, I want to reiterate, um, on Issaquapine Lake Road, uh, while I agree with Deputy Mayor, we, we didn't allocate the funds that we said we were going to, and that is shame on council. Like, I'm just going to call us out? Like, we absolutely need to get the planning done on Issaquapine Lake Road or it's never going to happen. But I also want to reiterate that Issaquapine Lake Road is not in the traffic model because it is not funded to be completed in the six years. So just to clarify around this policy, Issaquapine Lake Road does not now, nor, nor should it, nor will it appear in the traffic model because it is not funded, fully funded in between, and I'm not even going to say six years, between now and 2025. So in a, in a four, four and a half, four-year period, three-year, three-year period at this point, essentially. So it's not funded and fully funded. It is not in the traffic model. I just want to clarify that. And, and I want to, uh, say that I appreciate the city, uh, city manager for saying, yeah, like, we as a council keep kicking this can down the road and we have to stop doing that. We have to start working on these things. And if we can't even prioritize these three projects to correct existing failures that have existed, I think Deputy Mayor, you said that that intersection that we're talking about has been failing for a really long time. If we're not willing to commit to that, to this $2 million to correct the existing failures, then shame on us. Shame, shame, shame on us.
And I think we should clarify though, you know, I, I'm, I'm not saying no to, to doing these. I'm not saying no to funding them. The question is, is, you know, what does staff need from us? It's in this six-year window, so technically speaking, it looks like they're done. It's not in the mid-by-budget, but then again, Jeff.
It's not scheduled to start though, until after 2022.
Jeff, will you go back to the spreadsheet? I'll give 25 cents too, okay?
Yeah. I'll even cover her 25 cents.
I was trying to answer the question ahead of time, so.
No, 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 I, I understand why it's not in the budget because it's not slated to begin until 2023.
24.
Well, there's some, okay, sorry, that's silly. I'm, I'm looking at one of them that has some funding.
Yeah, the T, TR 54, which is the one in question, isn't scheduled to even begin until 2024. So it wouldn't be in the budget. So if our policy is, it, it has to be in the budget, it just doesn't make any sense.
No, and I, and I don't think it, it should because that, it, it doesn't make sense. Because then, I, I agree with you to that degree. But then the question I have and, and the reason that I get frustrated is that if you stick it in the six-year window, but then you don't do it, then what accountability is there? And how, as we move forward as a council, when all of us aren't on here anymore and there are other people sitting in these seats, how do we make sure that the policy doesn't go awry, that when something is put on here, like that project for $810,000, that it actually gets executed within the window? And that's the problem is that you got four-year terms for council members, a six-year tip and a two-year budget. It doesn't all marry up. And I, I have no problem executing these projects. My only rub with Sahali is I understand that there's an issue at that intersection. I don't deny it. But I want to make sure that if we're constructing a traffic light there, that somehow it's going to be, we don't have to undo $1.3 million worth of work when we have to fix Sahali as a whole.
Point well taken.
Well, it's true, but there's, there, there are, there are safety issues there. And, you know, anyway, we, we can, we can go back and forth on that, but those projects aren't scheduled to begin. And Christie, you, you raise great points, but the reality is, is that's council's job. And if, if whoever's sitting on the council isn't going to do their job and fund these projects that are needed, that are, that are to address existing failures. If, if council's not going to do that, again, I'm going to say shame on council. So I think the policy we have, which is projects that are fully funded on the tip in the, in that window, and for now, it's a three-year window instead of a six-year window, they need to be in the traffic model. And that means that council's committing, whether it's this council or a future council, we're committing to do those or we're committing to do something to alleviate the traffic there, right? Because it could be that when staff gets to the planning part, they may say, hey, guess what? We have a, we have a better way of solving that. We have a different thing we can go do. That's great, but we are committing that we, to the community, that we are going to resolve the existing issues that have been there for a long time and stop kicking the can down the road. And if council's going to keep kicking the can down the road, then we need to replace the council. Like, these, these issues need to be addressed. And Mr. City Manager, do you have any idea how many road projects we're working on right now?
No, I don't.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm not trying to be mean to you guys, but that's a little concerning that we don't even know like a ballpark number of road projects that we're working on. We should kind of know that, right? And, and I drive around the city, I actually don't see a whole lot of construction going on right at the moment. And, you know, I'm not blaming staff for that. If we haven't funded you to do that work, again, that's on council and shame on us. But if traffic really is such a big problem, then we should be funding this. And, and if we're not, then shame on us.
Well, I, I would suggest that we all get back to the council, just as Jeff outlined, so that we don't play a guessing game tonight. Um, and I'll, I'll stop there.
I don't see any more hands up. Jeff is trying to navigate away from that spreadsheet again, so maybe.
He's just going to keep collecting quarters from us, Christie.
There's a latte shop open later.
I'm just going to prepay you 20 bucks so we can just keep going back to the spreadsheet.
So, so I guess what I would say is, at least at the moment, is we do currently have a tip that we're operating under. Um, which is really, if you want us to continue with option A, that is fine. Um, it would be nice to have that clarity or direction from the council. If we want to do, like, I think I heard maybe a hybrid, it would be helpful to understand that. And I don't know that we can solve that tonight, and so maybe we need to bring this issue back in the future. Um, I'm not sure. So Deputy Mayor, back to you.
Thanks, Jeff. Um, you know, I almost wonder if this is like study session worthy rather than, um, because we, you know, technically we can take votes during a study session if we turn it into a special meeting. But I think, I, I feel like there's a deep dive that needs to be done here on the implications of any one of these. So I don't know what the council's sentiment is on that, but, um.
I think it's worthy of a study session. I think there's too many questions to try to put it into a meeting.
So I'll let, uh, Jeff, you and our city manager kind of noodle on that one as to when is an appropriate time to maybe distill this further and bring it back to council, um, just so we can maybe attempt to get out of here on time tonight. Is that okay with the council? I see Councilmember Trina, I see your hand up there.
Yeah, so I, I would just say that, well, I, I at least heard Jeff, I did, I at least heard two people mention five and six as a direction in which we could go. Um, we didn't hear from Councilmember Gamlin, but it seems like that would be something that maybe, uh, if a few others would chime in and agree that that would be one direction we could go. As well as obviously, since we're not adopting anything tonight, we're going to continue with the past policy of the tip that you're following right now. Following that, I would just, I would concur with the mayor and just say that, uh, and I believe the Deputy Mayor agreed as well, that you do a study session on this. I may, I may have misspoke for you there, Deputy Mayor, but, uh, if you wanted, I would be okay.
Yeah, to have a study session, um, yes.
I would be okay with that. Thank you.
And if we're going to migrate to a study session offline, would you be willing, as individually council members, to send in maybe some questions, concerns, other things, just so that I can package either whatever research that you're looking for or, or it's just this information at a deeper dive? But I would welcome, or we would welcome that additional input offline, if that's okay.
I think it's perfectly appropriate that council would gather some questions up in advance for you. That way, um, we could have a more productive study session.
Right, we appreciate that and, um, thank you again.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, um, since we have our mayor on, Karen, do you want to take over for, I mean, if there's not much, there's one thing, or do you want me to just keep going?
Nope, that's fine. You sound like you're getting a little raspy anyway.
Getting?
Okay, I think the last thing that we have up is, and hang on, let me go to the, the top of my, I think the last thing on the agenda is, uh, the meeting that we have scheduled for election night. And, um, Dave, I'm going to let, I'm going to turn that over to you for a little bit of input on that.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, the council meeting of November 2nd coincides with election night. Um, been my experience that it's not a good thing to keep meetings on those nights because everyone is preoccupied. Um, important discussions often get deferred because people want to know what's happening in election night. And, uh, with the advent of our, our phones and computers and things, we're distracted. So staff looked to bring this to the council's attention so that the council could give us some policy direction on whether you wanted to continue to have a meeting that night. And if you so choose, we'll agendize one for that. Or if you wanted to move to a meeting on either side of that, the third or the first or any other options that, um, council might, uh, entertain. We, we want time just to prepare, uh, in advance for the meeting. So, um, that's why we brought it up now. So Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, well, um, I think what we'll do is we'll go around and kind of let everybody kind of, uh, voice their opinion. I want to remind everybody, we have an extra meeting in, we have five Tuesdays in November. So we have an extra Tuesday to play with in November. Um, and, but that is also the month that we have budget. So keep that in mind. Past history, I guess, has been, um, to have it moved to Monday, whether that be good or bad. Um, so I want to put that out there as well. And, um, with that, I think I saw first hand go up to be Deputy Mayors and then we'll just go around, um, and round robin, um, starting with Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Um, yeah, traditionally, we haven't had a council meeting on election night. Um, and that would be my preference again. Um, I would be amenable to the Monday, I guess. Um, the other option that I threw out during the agenda meeting is that we simply look at the Tuesday prior to that because that would be, uh, Tuesday, the 26th, we wouldn't have a meeting, so we could add it there instead if mu, moving it to Monday was problematic for someone.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Stewart?
Um, I'm checking my calendar. I think I would prefer the Monday because my fourth Tuesdays already have commitments. So, uh, if we need that extra meeting or if we need that meeting.
So if we need that extra meeting or if we need that meeting, I would prefer moving it to Monday. But Mayor, I think it's really up to you. You're the one who's up for reelection. So whether or not we have it, I mean, I'm fine with it on Tuesday night, but I'd be fine moving it if others want to. I would just prefer Monday versus the fourth Tuesday.
Okay, well, I'm good with Monday. So Councilmember Tree?
Yeah, I'm good with Monday.
Okay, Councilmember Ross?
I'm good with Monday.
Okay. And is Councilmember Gamblin' on?
Yep, Monday's fine.
Okay, I think Monday it is. If that works out for David, if that works for staff, let's, and we can switch to Monday. I think that that would be great.
We will agendize a meeting, Mayor, for Monday, November 1st at the normal start time, 6:30 PM.
Okay, excellent. Okay, council reports?
None from me.
Move to adjourn.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. You have a first and a second, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All right. Everybody have a really good week. See you next week. Kristi, I hope you're feeling better.
Thanks.
See you in two weeks.
That's right, two weeks. Oh, no, next week. We have a quick meeting next week.
Oh, crap.
You agreed.
One item.
One item. Okay. See everybody next week. Bye.